My name is Krista Boyle and I am the Head of Communications for Cincinnati Public Schools. We are so excited to have you all here this evening. This is our second in a second series of Parent Town Halls. And this is mostly to be able to have an opportunity to answer your questions. We do have a couple of slides, so Dawn, if you'll go to the first slide, I'm just going to share a little bit about logistics. So you can ask Q and A through the chat function. You should be able to see that on your screen and you can ask it that way. We will also take live questions throughout. You can use the raise your hand feature and when it's your turn, you'll get a notice that you'll need to accept. And then we'll let you know when it is your turn to speak and at that point you can unmute yourself. The chat function, there are a couple of ways you can use that if you're having technical difficulties or questions. And then if you have a specific, kind of school-specific or family-specific question that you would like for us to answer, but you don't necessarily want in the Q and A function, you can submit that through chat as well. And we're just going to ask that you include your name, school, and contact information so that we have the ability to get back to you if we're not able to get to that question during the meeting. We will publish Q and A after the meeting and these will also be recorded and shared. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Superintendent Laura Mitchell.
Hello CPS parents, we're really excited that you're here with us this evening. We want to be able to answer your questions and we also want to be able to give a really big thank you to you. So our next slide is a thank you slide because you've worked really hard to not only make sure that your kids are learning in this distant learning environment, but also you have been working very hard to make sure that we can bring the confirmed rate of positive cases in the Cincinnati area down by wearing masks, washing hands, and participating in social distancing, so much so that the board was able to make a new decision as it relates to the education of our young people to move from distance learning to actually moving to blended learning face-to-face. So really a big thank you, not only for all the work that you've done with us, but the work that you'll do with us moving forward and also for helping to bring down the positivity rate within the Cincinnati area. So thank you. Next slide, please. So you may know that the board decided yesterday to adopt a new model and the model will be a face-to-face blended learning model and it is a 1-2-2 model. And what that means is on Monday, everyone will be in distance learning, but we'll have access to their teachers through Google Meet and through Schoolagie. And then there will be an A group that will be in session on Tuesday, Wednesday, and then a B group in session on Thursday, Friday. And so we're excited to be able to return to face-to-face instruction with our young people, but wanted to make sure that it's safe. And so we still have the six feet of social distancing in place, which is the reason we have two groups and we have all of our other precautionary measures. Next slide, please. For our preschool students and our specialized classrooms for students who have disabilities, we are going to move to a four-day-a-week model. And this is because our preschoolers really struggle with distance learning. And so we know how important it is in terms of the foundational years in preschool to lay a really good foundation for educating our young people. And so we will actually be able to bring our preschoolers back with six feet of social distancing because of the number of requirements in the classrooms. And so our preschool units are already typically lower than we have our other classrooms. So we're excited about that. Also, our specialized units, and these units are for students who have multiple disabilities or autism and doing distance learning has not been very successful with them at all. And so we're going to be able to move them to four days a week as well. And so Monday will always be the distance learning day, but these students will be able to be in class face-to-face with six feet of social distancing because again, these classroom numbers are very low. And so I believe that the highest number we would have in a specialized classroom would be eight students at a given time. And so we're excited to be able to provide some very differentiated services, very specifically to our very young students and our students who have special needs. Next slide, please. So we are going to use a phased-in approach. And this approach is phased in and the timeline is slightly different than the timeline that we presented yesterday. After conversation with many parents and emails, as well as conversations with our board, we were really not comfortable with phasing in our students, which means that our high schoolers would not make it to class until four weeks from now. And so we've accelerated the timeline. And so you can see on October the 5th, we'll have our preschool students back, our specialized classrooms back at 50%. We will also phase in our K to 2 students using the AB grouping, as well as our 7th and 8th grade students at our high schools still under the AB grouping model. And then the week of October 12th, we will have all of our preschoolers back, as well as our specialized classrooms. And then we'll transition our grades three to six at the elementary level and then grades nine to 12 at the high school level. And again, these would be still set up in the AB groupings. So this allows everyone to be back in place before the first week of the second quarter. Next slide. So at this point in time, I'm going to turn over the presentation to Dan Hoeneke. He's going to talk about safety protocols. Again, thank you so much families for being with us tonight and also being a part of the CPS family.
Thanks Laura, I'm thrilled to be with everyone tonight. I'm glad you are joining us. I just have a few slides to talk about some of the safety protocols that are in place. You've likely heard these before and there's just a ton of information on our website about the protocols that are in place for when we reopen schools. Next slide, please. You'll remember if you attended any of our previous Town Halls or if you've been watching the board members that the CDC has issued guidance for schools and there are 31 different components guidance for schools. But none of these are mandatory. The CDC doesn't, you know, set the law for schools. They're all just guidance. But CPS has been hard at work all summer to implement all 31 of these recommendations. So we have taken this as our sort of guidance document as we prepare the schools for in-person learning. Next slide, please. To apply this to Cincinnati Public specifically, we have put together a safety plan. Again, this is detailed information about the safety protocols that will be in place and have been in place. They've been in place since teachers returned in August. They will be in place when students return to in-person learning over the next several weeks. I won't go through them all here, but you'll remember that we talked about the four most important components of this safety plan is social distancing as number one. And again, we are prepared to maintain six-foot social distancing. Masks, the wearing of masks is required. The district has adopted one of the most stringent masks policies of school districts in the state. Hand hygiene is the third really important component of our safety plan. And then fourth is cleaning and disinfecting, which has been enhanced in all the buildings. Next slide, please. All this information again is on our website. There's a terrific amount of information. This district safety plan is even further kind of specified and tailored in our employee and student COVID guides. Again, these are also both on the website. It's the same information that's in the district safety plan, but directed specifically to the audience of our employees and the audience of our students. And we would be thrilled if you would take a look at these online, pull them up and start to go through them with your children even before we return to in-person learning. Next slide, please. Last is to introduce a safety video. Again, this is also available online and this is something that we'll be showing to all of our students. Teachers will be showing with students when we return to in-person learning. So I want to give you a preview of this short, it's about three-minute video right now. Thank you.
It's time to go to school. You wake up feeling healthy and that's great. Before you head off to the bus stop, make sure you have your backpack and a clean mask to wear for the day. Put your mask on so that it covers your nose and mouth. While you're waiting for the bus, stand apart from the other students. Make sure to fill the bus seats from back to front and sit facing forward. Please always sit by yourself unless you're with a sibling and continue wearing your mask over your nose and mouth. When you arrive at your school, only exit the bus when you're dismissed. Exit the bus in a single file. You'll see other students waiting for their health checks. When it's your turn, an adult will take your temperature by scanning your forehead and they'll ask you a few questions about how you're feeling.
How you doing today? How you feeling?
Now you can pick up your breakfast and go to your classroom. While walking in the hallway, be sure to give plenty of space to other students so that we can all stay safe. When you arrive at your classroom, an adult will remind you that we all need to sanitize our hands before entering. Your chairs will be spread apart and it's important for everyone's safety that you keep them that way. If anyone forgets, an adult will remind them to keep their distance. Remember to only use your own materials to do your schoolwork. You'll have to wear your mask at all times unless an adult tells you that you can have a mask break. Before meals, you'll need to wash your hands for 20 seconds. You'll be eating meals in your classroom. Take your mask off and put it on a paper towel near you while you eat. Be careful to keep your own food in your assigned area. After you're done eating, put your mask back on. Remember to only touch the loops on the side when putting the mask on or taking it off. You may get to go to recess. You'll want to keep your friends safe, so only use the equipment that has been assigned to you. When talking or playing with your friends, make sure to keep your distance. At the end of the school day, your teacher will tell you when you can go to your locker. If you don't have a locker, you'll gather your belongings and wave goodbye to your teachers and friends before you head home. Please follow adults' directions as you leave the building. We can't wait to see you.
So good evening, everybody. At this time, I think we're going to focus our attention on some updates and reminders for our parents and our guardians. Next slide, please. So of course, you may recall that there is a District Professional Development Day scheduled for October the 12th. We have made the decision to update that to September 28th, this coming Monday, to allow for final preparations for your children to come back to school starting the following week. So October 12th will be a distance learning day and September 28th will be a Teacher Professional Development Day. The principals will be sending out a survey this week and the intent is to ask you about children who intend to stay in the distance learning model or intend to enroll in our Cincinnati Digital Academy for those who prefer not to begin the blended model. Please look out for an email alerting you to parent training that will begin September the 29th. And those parent trainings will focus on the safety and the return to the classroom. Again, more details to follow. And parents, we will be sending testing consent forms to you so that we can get your consent, your permission to be able to COVID test your children. Bus cars should be arriving this week. There is a number for you to call. Did you have any questions? 363 RIDE. Next slide, please. Just some final reminders, the new Ohio notification requirements. You must let the school nurse know within 24 hours if your child has a COVID-19 confirmed diagnosis. CPS will notify impacted individuals as well as the Cincinnati Health Department within a 24-hour period. Please ensure you have multiple ways to pick up your child from school during the day in the event that they are showing symptoms of COVID-19. The AB groupings, you should already have received notification of which group your child is in. If you have any questions, please contact your child's school office. Next slide, please. Then we have a list of numbers for you. There's a technology number if you have any questions. If you have Wi-Fi connectivity concerns, there is an English-speaking number as well as Spanish-speaking. Again, the transportation number, customer care. And again, any questions about the AB groups, please contact your school for those specific inquiries. Next slide, please. So at this time, I believe I'm sending it back to Krista to address how we will handle your Q and A.
Terrific. So this is just a quick reminder, you can submit question via Q and A. I do believe we have a couple of folks in queue who have raised their hands, so we'll be getting to you guys in a moment. And of course, there's the chat function if you have a specific question. So we've received a ton of questions already on Q and A. So I am going to just go through a couple of those because there are some consistent ones. So I think probably one of the biggest topics is are children able to stay in their home schools if they prefer to continue with distance learning? Or do they have to enroll in CDA? And I'm going to take a stab at that question and then invite the rest of the leadership team to hop in. I think it is something that we talked about on the board meeting last night and it's something that we as a team are looking at to try to see if there are creative options. So for right now, CDA is potentially the best choice. However, we are trying to figure this out. So I think more to come on that option. Does anyone have anything they'd like to hop in with or to clarify? Okay, great. And then there was a part B to that that someone asked, which is, is there a deadline to enroll in CDA? If that ends up being the best choice for folks who would like to stay in distance learning? And I think the answer to that is no, that we don't currently have a deadline. But Tiana, do you have any thoughts on that?
Absolutely, there's no deadline at this time. We want to give parents the opportunity to process the information. We know that the learning model has changed to blended, so we're keeping it open.
Okay, great, thank you. Just wanted to check my thinking on that. And then another question that I saw several versions of is, why did we accelerate the timeline versus last night or kind of change the phase-in schedule? And we touched on that a little bit, but I think really it is to try to get kids in classrooms sooner. But we also wanted to keep that two-week window and make sure people had enough time to kind of get ready. That was a request that we had. If there are other additions to that theme, please chime in.
I would also just say that many parents expressed through email that there was a concern that our high school students would not be returning under the phased-in approach that we provided last night until four weeks, until starting with October 19th. And so really, I'm listening to what our parents said that they were interested in kids getting back into school as soon as possible. We don't believe that we are compromising the integrity of putting safety precautions in place. And so that's why we decided to move the PD release date from October the 12th to the 28th of September to make sure that we can walk those buildings and make sure that we have everything in place and ready to receive our young people. Because we want this to be a really great experience for our parents and also for our kids.
Perfect, thank you Superintendent. We have several questions also about Montessori. So Ms. Mott, I'm going to turn this over to you in a second, but specifically, is it possible for the three-to-six group to stay together? And what does spacing look like in those classrooms?
That's a great question. We have been looking at those numbers. And because there are a high number of kindergarten students, we were unable to provide the social distancing while keeping the three-six together for the four days a week. So the preschool will do the one-four model and then the kindergarten students will follow the same schedule as our traditional kindergarten program, which is a 1-2-2.
Great, thank you very much. I'm just kind of taking, I was writing down a bunch of stuff, so I'm just going down my list. So Shauna, a couple of questions for you about Walnut. One, how are we thinking about the return in general? And then also, what about orientation for kids who are new to the building? And how will we think about that in terms of changing classrooms and just kind of navigating the space?
Thank you Krista. So we have talked about Walnut Hills and all of our schools for quite some time and have had a plan. And recently, our parents have been asking us via email, telephone calls to reconsider a few items, a few pieces of the plan. And so we're actively doing that right now. Meeting with the principal again tomorrow and we hope to have a decision to you very, very quickly. I am not certain about Walnut's plan for orientation for their new students, but that's an important question that I'll jot down.
Okay, great, thank you. And while I have you, before you go back on mute, I have an athletics question. So will sports practice in their A and B groups when we go back? Or will they practice as they have been?
I believe the plan right now was for the sports to continue as they are with the practicing and the conditioning on the same schedule. We will continue that progression.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bunty, this one I believe is for you. Have we thought about allowing students on IEPs to attend four days a week? And is that something we would consider?
Hi, that's also a great question. Those are IEP team decisions. So we encourage our families to meet with their children's IEP teams to determine what is best meets the needs for their children.
Okay, great. I'm going to do one more question out of chat and then we will turn it over for live questions. Ms. Mott, I think this is a curriculum question for you. Can you help explain, so Monday in the 1-2-2 model will be distance learning like it has been. And then as we alternate, what are kids doing on days when they are at home learning instead of in the classroom learning on those AB schedule days?
I'm so excited that we moved to the 1-2-2 model because that Monday allows teachers to work with students, to prepare them for the at-home learning when they're working independently. So that Monday time will be used to give directions to students, give them some direct instruction to allow them to work independently. So they will get those instructions directly from their teachers on that Monday.
Okay, great, thank you. So Fran, I believe we have folks in queue who have accepted the invitation to ask questions. Do you mind helping us through that piece?
Sure. So first up to ask a question is Amy Lovelace. Amy, please go ahead and unmute yourself and go forward with your question.
Hi, this is Amy. Hey, I wanted to find out from you the value of two days in the classroom. What is that key driver sending us back? I'm concerned about the return on investment. The value of being in the classroom for just two days and reducing some of that instruction time for an elementary school kid. Consistency and scheduling is tough. We've all lived through that. The blended schedule puts more responsibilities on the parents than we have in the virtual schedule and it creates another layer of confusion for kids. We're in our fourth week and it's not easy, but our investment is paying off. We're figuring it out, the kids are figuring it out and getting the hang of the schedule and the technology, new ways of working. But we're adding this complexity as well of the health risk to our formula. So I'm just, I don't see the incremental value yet and I'm looking for that payoff, the investment in the heart that it's going to take in learning those new ways of working again. So can you help me understand what those key drivers are for sending us back?
I'll start. Hi Ms. Lovelace, good to see you.
Hi, good to see you.
One of the most important key drivers that we discussed was the social-emotional wellness of our students and being able to connect with each other and other peers along with their classroom teachers. We heard that over and over again, just reading the research, just how important that face-to-face connection is. So that's one part of it. The other, the academic piece is it's nothing like that direct interaction with a teacher and the peers academically. So we wanted to take this hybrid approach to get that interaction, that peer dialogue in the classroom going again. Sometimes it's, we're faced with technology issues, so that will eliminate some of those barriers. But truly, the first consideration that we looked at, the condition that we looked at was student wellness and having that interaction with other kids and their teacher.
Yeah, I would also add that from the very beginning, the board has been dedicated to reviewing the data to make different decisions in the best interest of kids. And so the board was committed to looking at the data on August the 3rd and going to distance learning and then looking at the data on the 14th of September. We know that many of our kids are missing being in school. I've received, and I wrote a letter to a little girl just the other day, Louise, who's a second grader who wrote me this letter and says, you know, "I really miss going to school, I miss my friends, I miss my teachers, I miss my specials and I really want to go back to the buildings." And so we listen to our kids, we listen to the professionals in terms of what's in the best interest of our kids as it relates to social and emotional learning. We know that there are many kids who may be experiencing neglect right now that we don't know about or abuse because they aren't with us in our schools. We have 24 school-based health centers that we know our kids need to be able to access in addition to the vision clinics and the dental clinics. And so we just know that there are a lot of other things that we need to be able to deliver in terms of services to our young people. We're concerned about the isolation that they're feeling. We know that suicide ideology is going up for our young people because of this distance thing that they've been a part of. And so we have really listened to and watched the research and considered the health benefits as well as the academic benefits to returning to in-person, face-to-face learning.
I can appreciate it was a really tricky balance to get all of those factors in there. We're going to have to make a decision as to how much we feel like the health risk outweighs those social and emotional benefits that are really driving it. No doubt, no doubt, my girls, they love school so much and they miss those teachers, they miss their friends and can't wait to get back to it. But a second grader, a seven-year-old, needs that consistency, the schedule, the predictability. I worry that after five days of unstructured time, when we have to rouse her out of bed for that next, that Thursday morning, that first day after the sixth day of being out of school, every week is going to feel like the first day of school. So thanks for taking my question. I really appreciate all the work that you're doing on this and thanks for listening to all these different perspectives.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Fran, who do we have next?
Next up, we have Alex Q. Please go ahead and unmute yourself and go forward with your question.
Hi, I have a senior at Walnut Health High School and I know that it's still a work in progress. I just was curious as to, it sounds like Walnut is a different animal because we have overcrowding at the school and therefore the plan that is put forth for the other schools would not work at our school. And with that, I just was really concerned. I have a senior there. We have a large number of Walnut Hill students who take advanced placement classes that are, you know, content-dense, college-level classes. And already teachers have expressed with the current three hours per class of online instruction that they may not have all the content in by the time the exams take place in May. So I'm curious, has that been a big consideration in this new plan for Walnut? And trying to maximize the amount of time that our students are actually receiving instruction from their teachers, especially with the type of classes that do require especially with the type of classes that do require quite a bit of instruction and collaboration with the teacher and groups. And it seems like to go back to school in person, the price for that would be less instruction time.
So, Alex, thank you for that question. You may remember in the spring, we had several students taking advanced placement courses. And our teachers and students worked so hard to ensure that they were prepared for any testing that needed to take place and did a nice job. And so, that's why we're taking our time, listening to the parents like you, listening to our students, listening to our teachers and our principals. And we want to make sure that we have thoroughly considered all angles before we share this decision.
I would like to give feedback as a parent who had a junior who took AP classes in the spring. The difference between the spring and this upcoming May is that I think the playing field was sort of leveled in that all of the students were out of school and were on some type of virtual learning. Our students at Walnut and other high schools in CPS are in the spring going to be taking these exams and are going to be competing with and judged against students who are currently in class five days a week, receiving instruction as they normally would. So, that spring and also the College Board changed the format of those tests, a 45-minute online test. So, I'm just concerned that we are going to be setting up our students to fail. It's not going to be the same situation as it was this last spring. And I'm also very concerned, as the woman before me stated, I think when there is a daily schedule that provides structure and normalcy every single day, the student knows they have to be out of bed and online. As much as I would love for my children to get back to school, this on, the virtual learning has provided the structure and a weekly schedule that is, I think, extremely beneficial academically as well as for the mental health. And so, I just really want that to be considered and want this board to really think about academically where our students will be come the spring of 2021. Thank you so much for all of your listening and consideration. I do appreciate it.
Great, thank you very much. We have several questions in the Q and A around what school will look like in terms of safety protocols as well as the data. So, I'm going to address those, and then we can come back to a couple of live questions. So, the first one is, what will we do when kids are not compliant around mask-wearing and social distancing? And I think the answer is that all, you know, adults are really on point to help enforce those rules. And I think making sure kids know what's expected of them before they get in the classroom, once they get in the classroom, continually reinforcing that. And then, just making sure we're providing reminders throughout the day as well as, you know, encouraging kids to put their masks back on if they need to, making sure that we're allowing mask breaks when those need to happen. And so, I don't know if anyone on the team has anything to add to that, Dan. I'm sort of pinch hitting for Sarah here, but anyone else?
Yeah, Sarah Tribble Oliver, our Chief Strategy Officer, and Cynthia Bonia, who manages our environmental health and safety. And I have been working on this. As we talked about, the district has this really strong mask policy. We've been taking the mask policy very seriously with our employees, and we will with our students. We'll be teaching. We'll be reteaching as much as we need to. We've worked on this with our discipline committee as well. If there's intentional noncompliance, you know, we have the discipline, student discipline available to use. But mostly, I think the urging that we're pushing tonight is that parents work with their kids on this. If we want to keep schools open for in-person learning, it is absolutely critical that we get as much help as we can from parents in teaching our kids the importance of wearing masks throughout the day. That is, again, the social distancing and masks are the two really critical ways of preventing the spread of this condition, this disease. So, thanks, Krista.
Perfect.
Susan, Chris, I'm sorry. Susan may be able to answer this. This is under her area of purview in terms of teaching these practices. So, I invite Assistant Superintendent Susan Bunty.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent Mitchell. So, we are planning to work with our students on really emphasizing the why behind why it's important to wear masks. As we know, we in our schools do our very best to create caring communities. And so, we are really focused on the way that we keep each other safe is by socially distancing and wearing a mask. The video that you saw earlier is one such example of how students will be taught about mask-wearing. And in addition, for younger students, we have infographics that we can use with them to help reinforce those behaviors. If students require reteaching of those behaviors, we have individuals on staff who will be able to work with kids on the why again behind that and reinforce them.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Mr. Hoen, we have a couple of questions also about the confirmed case process and how we would handle that once kids are back in the classroom.
Thanks. Yeah, this is something that we've worked on and revised and worked on probably as much as any process this year. So, again, as we return to in-person instruction and on a six-foot social distancing basis with masks, our hope is that, you know, even when there is a confirmed case, it's not necessary that we would need to close the entire school. When there's a confirmed case, we go through a lot. We report that to the Health Department. We report it to parents. We have letters that we've developed that schools will be using to inform parents that we have a confirmed case. We'll do, we do some level of social, excuse me, of contact tracing to determine whether anyone within the school community has come into close contact with that confirmed case. And if so, they get a special notification because they're advised that they need to quarantine for a period of time. So, and then, of course, our enhanced cleaning and sanitation process that we've been working on as well. So, that confirmed case protocol is, been well-developed and revised, and we'll continue to revise as needed. But we've got, we've got it pretty, I think, tweaked to be very responsive in the event of confirmed cases in the schools. Thanks, Krista.
Thank you. The next question is very timely. It's something we actually talked about within the last several days. So, will kids have Plexiglas on their desk during lunchtime since they will have their masks off? And I am pleased to be the one to share that, yes, we are working to make sure that kids have something on their desks so that there's a little extra layer of protection during lunchtime. I don't know if other members of the leadership team would like to hop in on that, but that's a good question. Okay, great. So, let me see. I think Fran had to hop. Fran, are you on? Not, let me go up.
On, yes, correct.
Oh, great, perfect. Could you let us know who is in queue?
Absolutely. The next person up is Shawna. Shawna, please go ahead and unmute yourself and go forward with your question. Thank you.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. I have a question, well, a couple of questions. How will students be taught different languages or the online schooling system if they decide not to return to their school? For instance, like the German school. If a child has, he goes to that school and he's not going to return, we don't know yet or not, how would he be taught German through your online schooling system? Because from what I'm understanding, it's just like a broad system, you know? It's just schooling online. They don't have to come in. But will there be like a different course? Will they offer the German? Because if not, that child would be put back a year when they are able to return. And I have, I want to get one more question out real quick, so maybe you guys can answer that as well. So, parents with multiple children, the groups are going to be broken up, I think, like A-B or however that group goes. So, if they have multiple children, would all their children attend in person on the same day? Or would it be broken up with one child have to go A, one have to go B? Because if so, that would be kind of inconvenient, you know? It beats out the purpose of, you know, the at-home remote learning. They could just stay home instead of one child going with the A group on Monday, and then, you know, the second child going on the B group. You know, it puts a little bit more strain on the parent trying to get them to school in person.
Great. So, I'll take the groupings question and then turn it over to Ms. Mott to talk about languages and CDA, if that's okay. So, yes, we are, we tried really hard to make sure that all students in the same household are attending school on the same, within the same grouping for just that reason. So, hopefully, that is helpful. And then, Ms. Mott, would you like to talk about languages?
Krista, would you mind if I just jumped in on the grouping?
No, not at all. Please.
So, we went beyond trying. We first decided to group our students according to last name. And then, based upon that, we then decided to do another level of grouping according to students who lived in the, at the same address, but maybe have different last names. Then, we want to step further than that to say, okay, of the kids who live in the same household, which kid is the oldest kid? And set their schedule first in the event that they have to watch their siblings on the days that distance learning takes place. And so, all kids who live in the same household should be scheduled on the same days to be able to receive instruction face-to-face and the same days with distance learning. So, I want to just want to make that known that the IT group went to extensive work to make that happen, to make it more convenient for our families. So, I apologize for the interruption, but wanted to make sure you had all the information.
Thank you.
And just like the transportation was customized, we're doing the same thing at CDA. So, if your neighborhood or your magnet program offers a foreign language, you would need to contact the school principal. And what we are doing is contacting those teachers at those schools. So, for instance, we would contact the teacher at Fairview, the German teacher, to see if they would be willing to teach the class at CDA. Most likely, it would be a before or after-school course, so it went in conflict. But that's what we've been doing for some of those elective classes, but to maintain that consistency. So, when the child returns back to their neighborhood school or magnet school or high school, they haven't missed a beat. So, I would encourage you to, definitely, to talk to Mr. Rozier.
That's great. Thank you. Just a quick build on that, there are also some questions about would folks lose their place in their current school if they move to CDA? And the answer to that is no. Your place is retained for a year. Fran, who else do we have in queue?
The next person to ask their question is Rose. Rose, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I had a couple of questions. The first one was, today I found out from a CPS teacher that students will have designated mask off time at different times throughout the day to give them a break from their mask. Is this accurate? And if so, would you agree that this is counterproductive and shouldn't be allowed? And then, my second question was, how often do you guys plan to reassess the current COVID-19 data to determine if schools can continue to safely remain open? I know that last time, when the data got out of hand and there were a lot of deaths, CPS was one of the last schools to close and turn over to digital. So, I'm hoping that this time, if it gets out of hand, that it would be a more prompt decision to turn over to digital just for the safety of our children.
So, Krista, I will take the first one. In terms of the review of the data, so when we closed in the spring, just for clarification, CPS was not one of the first schools to close. We closed as a result of a mandate that came delivered by the governor. And the governor gave a date of, and I don't remember the date off the top of my head, but it was the Monday after we found out on a Thursday that we were supposed to close. And we actually closed our doors on Friday. So, we closed our doors the day before the governor actually required that we close. In addition, we did decide to, the board did decide to choose a distance learning model back in June, but was always committed to evaluating the data to determine whether or not we could return to face-to-face or distance learning. And so, that decision was made on August 3, way before schools started to move to distance learning. Every few weeks, the board reevaluates the data, and they analyze it with the administration. And so, I will say though, that the administration, we receive the data on a daily basis, actually twice a day. We actually also send those reports daily to the board for them to be able to review. And yesterday, we had the Health Department, a physician and epidemiologist and speak to the data. So, it wasn't CPS's interpretation of the data. And based upon their advisory system for school districts, Cincinnati Public is in a position as it relates to the City of Cincinnati to move back to blended learning as recommended by the Cincinnati Health Department.
Terrific. Thank you.
And Krista, just to answer the question about the mask breaks, there's not designated periods of time during the day when masks won't be worn. But teachers have been given guidance and will be given guidance about how to, as safely as we can, give students mask breaks throughout the day. These are controlled periods of, you know, just a short minute or two when students are distanced, six feet apart, you know, heads forward or down to give students the opportunity to take off.
Okay, thank you.
Their mask for just a brief second. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Thanks for your questions. I'm going to do a couple from chat. This is one that we've been asked in a couple of different ways. So, and I believe it is probably for Ms. Mott. What resources will be offered to support students during digital learning days when they will not have a teacher to guide them?
That's why it was so key during distance learning to really be intentional in our learning model. So, at this point, we have such a high proficiency on Schoology. That is our learning platform. For all lessons, whether you're in person or learning at home, the lessons will be on Schoology. Directions are given on Schoology, and the communication and grades is on Schoology. So, we really look to be consistent. So, when the child is working at home, they are able to work independently, add a learning model, and access the work easy and answer or get questions answered from their teacher easily by having that one platform. So, on that platform there are things such as their textbooks, syllabus. We will be providing a parent guide in multiple languages in the next week or so. We're putting the finishing touches on that. That will provide additional support at home. But Schoology is really the learning platform that the kids are familiar with. Hopefully, the parents have been on there, and the lessons will still be on that learning platform.
Great, thank you very much. So, this is a question, I believe, from Ms. Bunty. Some students meet with a speech or OT therapist, and these meetings are in close proximity. Will they continue to be online, or will those be in person?
Thank you for that question. So, it depends on the needs of the child. Some children have been doing... Some children have been doing teletherapy quite successfully. If they are going to meet in person with a speech-language pathologist, there will be a Plexiglas screen that separates the speech-language pathologist from the child so that they can still see each other and interact, but so that we're also maximizing safety.
Perfect, thank you. All right, so we have just about, I don't know, about a little over five minutes, six, seven minutes. So let's do one more question, Fran, from the folks who would like, who raised their hand. And then we'll see how we're doing on time.
Next in the queue is James Creighton. Please go ahead and unmute yourself and go ahead with your question, please.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Can.
Awesome. I'd first like to thank you all for taking the time out to speak with us today. Secondly, I'd like to say that I do notice that you guys are still at home, but that conversation is for another time. I'm the parent of seven children, five of which are currently enrolled in CPS. One at Fairview, a couple in Montessori, and one at Walnut. My children are relatively intelligent. I've explained to them about masks. I've explained to them about social distancing and they, they understand. They get it. Do I trust them once they leave my house? No. And anybody who's a parent of children should know that off just general interaction with your kids. You know, when they leave, they'll see their friends and a lot of the instruction that you've given them goes directly out of the window. That can be controlled to an extent. That's neither here nor there. Two hundred thousand people have died. Many more than that have been seriously ill. I know a bunch of those people personally, including my mother. I know two people who have died personally. And Hamilton County has the third most cases in Ohio. At this rate, if you don't know anyone that this is directly affected, you will. Those deaths and hospitalizations disproportionately affect people of color. With everything else going on in society right now, I don't understand how you guys think that makes us feel sending our kids back to school when we know as a community that this disease is affecting us more. Also, that brings about the idea of discipline for mask-wearing and social distancing. We also know due to studies that disciplinary actions also affect children of color more than they do of other demographics. I know my children and I know how they would react to someone invading their personal space in this particular time. These choices that you've given us have put us in between a rock and a hard place. As parents, as educators, as students, it's the illusion of choice. It's keep your kids home, continue as we've been going, that we have learned to maintain over this time. Or send them back into a situation where we have to change something for a seven-year-old who already just now got what's going on right now. Have to change something for a teenager with an IEP. Have to change something for a teenager who goes to Walnut. Or leave him at home. And then my children again, understand the risk of being in a closed space with a bunch of people. Of course, it'll be half the school, half the school is a lot of people for, you know, this particular problem. Children who already feel unimportant, children who already feel disregarded, look at this situation. And this is coming directly from my older children. They look at this situation as if you guys are putting politics and what people are telling you above the safety of those children. And just from conversations with other people, scientists, friends, architectural friends, just friends of mine, there are so many viable improvements to the system that's been proposed. One thing I think a lady said earlier was about keeping our children in the same program and maybe giving parents the option to send them to school, their children to school, but have ours still continue distance learning. I don't see any reason why you can't sit at a desk as a teacher with the computer like you've been doing and have five or six, you know, children in class as well. It puts a lot of stress on the teachers, but that's nothing that you guys haven't done already. Distance learning, until we have a viable vaccine or some way to stop this thing, I can't see it doing too much more damage than it's already done. I understand the social issues. I understand the emotional distress that some of the children are in. Heck, I am in probably more emotional distress than any of my children are right now. But you have to know as a parent that you can't just keep kids away from each other when it's a bunch of them in one place. You can't drop two kids off at a shopping mall and have them stay away from each other. I don't know how you think that that's going to do in a classroom setting. Nonetheless, these are just my observations.
So Krista, I'd love to be able to address these concerns. So first of all, I want to say that although we are at home, sitting at home right now, the only reason we're sitting at home and some of us are still at work is because there was a six o'clock meeting. Central Office for the Cincinnati Public School District has been in session at work since May. So we reopened our doors to our employees in May as well as our public. So we are not asking our kids to do anything that we ourselves are not doing. As you can see, Ms. Amot is still in her office at Central Office. We, some of us just opted to come home and do this, this meeting, this town hall. But we have been in session since May, working five days a week and sometimes, a lot of times on the weekend from work. The decision to return to face-to-face in a blended learning model was a board decision based upon the information that we have as provided by scientists and healthcare professionals. I understand everything that you're saying, sir. And what I would say to you is that this really comes down to parental choice in terms of your comfort level of sending your child back to school. And it is an individual choice that you have to make. Just as you feel so strongly about students staying home and continuing with distance learning, there are a lot of other parents who are expressing through emails and phone calls, hundreds of them, that they would like their children to be able to return the face-to-face learning within CPS that many of the school districts all around us have done so. And we've analyzed the data to look at the spread in those districts. And the board determined that they believed it was in the best interest of the students to return to school. But again, it is a personal, individual parental choice that you make. And we respect you for your thoughts and for what you decide to do. In terms of the mask-wearing, it is not our intent to hand down harsh consequences for our young people. But I believe that our Assistant Superintendent said it extremely well. It's about teaching young people the responsibility of taking care of themselves as well as the community and that they are a vital part of making the entire school community a safe place for everyone. So it's more about teaching than handing down consequences. We'll never come up with a decision or a set of strategies that will fit the needs of every single person. There are many parents who feel as you feel, and then there are many other parents who feel that they want their kids back. There are many kids who feel anxiety about returning to school. And then there are many kids who are ready to return to school. So again, it is about individual, personal choice. And so that's, that's where we are as a district. It's a decision that the board has made. But it has been informed by daily data that we are receiving from the Health Department and physicians who are helping to analyze that data with us. But I thank you so much for your concern and for all of your thoughts, and we will definitely take it into consideration. Thank you.
One more thing really quick. Madam Secretary, I'd just like to say thank you for responding and clearing some of those things up, especially the thing about you guys being at home, because I've seen so many little message board posts there at home. Thank you for clearing that up for a lot of folks. The only thing I, I would even say at all about that is completely, I believe it should be up to the parents. And like I said, those that want to have their children back in in-person learning should definitely have that option. My concern is, like a lot of the other parents, the curriculum change. Like I said, I have a student at Walnut, like the lady expressed earlier. What does he do as he's being acclimated? This is his first year. I have students in Montessori. What do they do as they're being acclimated if I feel like I need to keep them home to, you know, to be able to ensure the safety of my family? And those, those are the things that are really, really weighing on us here. But thank you so much for your answers.
Yeah, absolutely. I didn't mean to cut you off, but what I do want to say is that it is our desire to help meet the needs of our parents. And so I am hearing you loudly and clearly and taking notes. And we have discussed, as we will continue to discuss, how we can provide many options for our families. So it's not an all-or-nothing option. And so again, I appreciate what you've said. And please understand that it's not falling on deaf ears. We are listening and trying to find solutions to be able to, to meet your needs. So thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everyone. We are at the top of the hour and I do want to be respectful to everybody's time. We know that, I think we've had hundreds of questions asked. So we will compile those, we'll put them into themes. A lot of them are very similar. And we will make sure that this information gets out onto our website. This recording will also be shared. So thank you for the more than 260 folks who decided to join us tonight. We appreciate everything. Superintendent, do you have any final quick words?
Just again, want to reiterate, families, we appreciate you. We thank you for being with us this evening for all the questions that you've asked. For the, you're challenging our thought. We never, ever think that we have all the answers and that we have arrived. We are a district about learning and quality improvement. And so please know that we are listening to you, that we take copious notes and then we go back to see if we can make something work for everyone. And so that really is our desire. It is not to have a cookie cutter template that people are forced into. So please know that we are working very hard to be able to meet your needs. It's just impossible to meet everyone's needs, especially sometimes when they conflict with one another. But please know that you are being heard and that we are considering what you're saying. And we will try to, as much as we can, meet your needs. So thanks for being with us. Please look forward to additional information coming out from your schools and also from Central Office. And I hope that you have a wonderful rest of the evening. Thank you.
I'm just going to chime in really fast because I forgot to mention it earlier. There is a survey as you, as we exit, so feel free to take that. We're always looking to continually improve how we do these. So thank you, everyone, for your time.